This time I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education to order for our regular board meeting for June 11, 2019. This time I will call for a moment of silence. At this time if everyone will join and stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time we have no public comments so we'll move right into our vision and policy and code of ethics.
Vision statement: Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should: Avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board; Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board; Avoid the misuse of public funds; Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts; And avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. Moving along to our agenda, I'll now call for a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda for June 11, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor approving the agenda as presented, signal saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Moving right along to our minutes from our last board meeting on May 14, 2019, I will seek a motion for approval of our minutes.
Patra, can I make a motion to approve the minute says?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor approving our minutes from May 14, 2019, signal saying aye. Aye. Like sign. Our minutes are approved. Moving along into my chairman's report, and we have a lot of stuff that has been going on with our school system in the last couple of months, especially since our last board meeting. Congratulations to not only our seniors but to everyone who completed a successful school year this year, from elementary schools on up to our high schools. I know it was a signing time, the last two or three weeks, we all attended at some point, I feel like, some kind of celebration, and it was a wonderful experience across the board. I myself got to attend Broadway and Bragg Street and Lee Early College in both high schools, but it's impossible to try to make it everything throughout the county. Some numbers that are preliminary at this point is that in scholarship money, Southern leaves received 2.7 million, and from Lee County High School here, 2.5 million. So that is the amount so far, because we still have scholarships coming in that our students have received in scholarship money. But also, I would also like to say a thank you and congratulations to all of our teachers who have worked hard this year. They have put in the time and effort, and we thank them for a year of service, and I hope you enjoy your break, if you get one, if you're coming back with us during the summer. Thank you for your dedication, and thank you for your dedication to all our teachers. Because your dedication is unmeasurable by any means. At this time, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Andy Bryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time I'd like to recognize Superintendent's Extra Effort Award. Tonight, we are recognizing an individual who just recently retired as a teacher, coach, and athletic director at Lee County High School. And the school, Lee County High School brought to us the idea of naming the new gym after this individual for all of their great service, not only to Lee County High School but to the community at large. And I know everyone on the Board thought it was a wonderful idea to recognize him. So what we'd like to do tonight, even though Lee County High School's already had a ceremony to do this, I'd like to have Reggie Peace to come forward, please. If he would. I don't think that Reggie, I think Reggie's probably pretty well-known within the community and the school community, but we'd just like to recognize you for all of your efforts and your great dedication to Lee County High School and Lee County overall. And to be in receipt of our Superintendent's Extra Effort Award, appreciative of everything you have done. And the person who gets that usually gets an opportunity to speak at the mic and then have their picture taken with the Board. So I will turn it over to you and then we'll have your picture taken with the Board. Congratulations, Mr. Peace.
I would just like to thank the Board, first of all, for granting me with the naming of the gym. It's just been a labor of love for me, working here in Lee County and serving the community and the students of Lee County High School. And I'm very appreciative, honored, humbled by that, and hopefully we'll continue to do some great work down the road also. But thank you very much.
At this time, is there any board members who would like to make any comments at this time?
On the way in, I made a special trip down to look at the gym, and I know your name's not up there yet, and actually we haven't voted on it, but don't worry, we'll do that tonight. And it's gonna look good down there, and it's due. Thank you for all the years and time that you've put in on the behalf of our students.
Thank you.
Reggie, I'd like to say as well, I see you on Friday night from kind of above, and it's an honor to have you up there with me and kind of see us both kind of running around before game time, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Look forward to continue seeing you around.
I hope so.
I know of at least one former student whose lives you touched, and that was mine, because you came in your class weak and definitely came out strong, not only by muscle but mind and body. So, because if you ain't never had him as a coach, you ain't never had a rough one, I can tell you that.
Appreciate it.
Alright, let's come down and take a picture.
newest group of Kenan Fellows.
I brought some reinforcements with the former Kenan Fellows, too. Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Good evening, Mr. Kelly, board members. Tonight we want to recognize this year's recipients of the North Carolina Kenan Fellowships from Lee County. I'm also joined by some former Kenans. We've got Stephen Roman here, he is our science teacher at Lee County High School. Angel Mills, ESL Director. Daria Frederick, CTE Teacher at Bragg Street Academy. And Crystal Wisenant, I'm gonna spell your name wrong, I'm sorry, from second grade at Broadway Elementary. And myself, we are all former Kenan Fellows, and we wanted to come to welcome the new Kenan Fellows, because as we say, once a Kenan, always a Kenan. So they kind of know who they can call on now. Founded in 2000, the Kenan Fellows Program for Teacher Leadership addresses the critical need for high-quality professional development for educators, and it is the largest STEM-focused teacher leadership program in North Carolina. Approximately 25 to 50 outstanding K-12 teachers from across the state are selected annually for this year-long program. This year there were 27 teachers from across the state accepted into the program, and three of those come from Lee County, which I think is a record for us. It's usually one or two. So to have three is very telling of our teachers and their abilities. Key components of their fellowship will be a three-week paid internship with a mentor in a research or applied STEM setting, and 80 hours of professional development provided by Kenan that builds leadership capacity and promotes curricular design building with STEM at work and STEM at school. The mission of Kenan is to advance K-12 STEM education by providing educators with relevant real-world professional learning and leadership development through innovative collaborations with partners committed to 21st century education and workforce preparation. And I can say from personal experience, I'm sure the other Kenans would concur, it can be a career-changing experience, and it doesn't end when the fellowship ends. You continue being part of the Kenan world and continue having a lot of interactions with the work world and bringing that into your classroom. So this year we have three exceptional teachers that were accepted into the program following a very demanding selection process, and some of us have been part of that process, not just as the people who were selected, but also helping select from across the state, and it is very demanding, and we're gonna introduce two of them, one of them couldn't be with us tonight. Rebecca Bosworth is a science teacher at Lee County High School, and her fellowship is titled "Using Magnetism to Decipher Structures of Proteins in Biological Membrane." And she'll be working with Dr. Alex Nevzorov of North Carolina State University this summer and throughout the year next year. Taylor Waters is a fourth-grade teacher at BT Bullock Elementary, and Ms. Waters' fellowship is entitled "Pay It Forward," and she'll be working with Marie Shelley, Leslie Waden, and Nikki Heath of Fidelity Investments. And not able to be here tonight, Maggie Gaines Hackney, who is an ESL teacher at Greenwood Elementary, will be doing a fellowship entitled "Assembly Required." She'll be working with Jerry Pedley and Melody Hamilton of MerTech Solutions. So we hope now that we've been here, this will become a tradition, and each year we'll be able to come back. Next year you'll be on this side, and we'll be congratulating some new Kenans. As former Kenan Fellows, we want to congratulate you and welcome you to the Kenan family, and we can't wait to see what you're gonna contribute to your classrooms, the schools you work in, the district, and beyond that. Thank you.
This time I'd like to ask Dr. Johnny Wallard to come forward, please, for the Clean School of the Month.
Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Bryan, I'm excited to report that our last month, all 16 of our schools scored 90 or above on their inspections. We had two scores of 95, we had two scores of 97, four scores of 98, and one score of 99, which was for Warren Williams Elementary.
It's all thanks to him. Well, we just want to thank the Board, and personally, I do want to thank Mr. Ray, because we could not do it without you. He does it all at Warren Williams, he's surrounded with women. And, but he keeps up with all of us, and he keeps the school as clean as it can be, especially having 127 preschoolers coming in and out every day. So, well done, Mr. Ray, we are very proud of you.
Congratulations. Would you like to say anything? Thank you, congratulations again.
Accountability update, we have finished up, obviously, testing with the year for the regular school year. We'll be starting summer school next week, and also just a reminder to everybody, all the math test scores are delayed until August, so we don't have any way of knowing what that will be and how the state will sort of read on that. So that information will be coming forward as we get late into the summer. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Moving along to our committee reports, to curriculum and instruction, Dr. Stephen Cobble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items in the consent agenda that will come up in here, and along with that, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting met May 29 at Lee County High School, where the superintendent made remarks about the hard work that had been going on during the year. John Conway thanked everybody for the hard work they had. We had two special presentations. The first one was the CTE Plan presentation. Gary Hart said he's proud to be part of the career in technical education in Lee County. The National Technical Honor Society had over 65 students inducted this year. The CTSO participation's on the rise, DECA, Skills USA, HOSA, FCC LA, and FBLA. We currently have over 400 students who are active members in the CTSO. The work-based learning experiences have turned out very well with additional credentials, certifications. Internships for our students at local businesses are up, they've logged over 500 hours of community service in addition to the hours they've been doing working. Our students have been asked to speak at numerous events, conferences, Washington Summit, Educator Summit with the Governor, public policy meetings, convocation for Lee County Schools, meetings to discuss the relevance of CTE with our Congress, and featured students in the USA Today discussing their Linvo app challenge. Mr. Hart also mentioned our CTE teachers and their dedication to the program over the past three years. Six of our CTE teachers were named Teacher of the Year at their respective schools. We also had a Kenan Fellow's recipient. Our teachers have worked hard to provide diverse learning opportunities. Boiling this down, do we see a concentrated effort to boost the economic status of Lee County families? The career and technical education staff of Lee County Schools has, since 2016, added over $700,000 a year in total value education, credentials, and income. It's a tremendous undertaking, Mr. Chairman, and it's something that we look for academics, yes, and we've looked for all the things that have made them look great. You mentioned the scholarships a while ago. At the end of this year, when we get the total on the scholarships over the past six years, it will amount to scholarships and value-added with the bachelor's programs, with the two-year education programs. It will amount to over $30 million. We have a tremendous undertaking here, and it has benefited our students. It's something I don't think our staff gets recognized for. Oftentimes we look at the problems, or oftentimes we look at the things that will take away from it, but it's a tremendous amount of work, and I would like to say thank you to all of the Lee County School staff members that have put so much effort into it. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Moving on into Facilities and Technology, Dr. Lynn Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The F&amp;T Committee met on May 23. The first item on our agenda was the WB Wicker Elementary School Building Plaque. These are the plaques that you see in all of our schools, and in this circumstance, it will list the names of members of this Board who were serving when that site was selected. It will also contain the names of the members of this Board who were serving when construction started. It was a consensus of the committee to approve the Lee County Board of Education and Lee County Board of Commissioners Building Plaque for WB Wicker Elementary School, and that is on the consent agenda. The second item was the WB Wicker Elementary School Playground Equipment Bid. It was a consensus of the committee to award the WB Wicker Elementary School Playground Equipment Bid to Bars Construction LLC in the amount of $150,000, $870,000, and .33. That item is also on your consent agenda. Chris McNeil, our maintenance director, mentioned, reported that the WB Wicker Elementary School construction remains on time and no change orders. Mr. McCracken and I had a brief conversation about the Lee County Sheriff's Department and their school supply collection for WB Wicker. That is huge to have that kind of cooperation and support from the Sheriff's Office in collecting items to be used in the new Wicker School. The next meeting of the F&amp;T Committee, Mr. Chairman, will be on June 20, 4:00 p.m. in the second floor of the conference room.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Moving on to Finance, once again, Dr. Smith.
Actually, the Finance Committee was scheduled to meet on the 20th of June. It was canceled, and our next meeting will be on June 20 at 5:00 p.m. in the conference room.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Policy, board member Womack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board is putting up today for second reading, Policy 4240, 7312, Child Abuse Reports and Investigations, 4700 Student Records, Review 7100 Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, 7130 Licenseur, and 7940 Classification of Personnel. We will not be having a board meeting on June 18, barring any North Carolina School Board Association changes, and our next scheduled meeting will be on the 16th of July at 5:00 p.m. in the Heinz Building. If anybody would like to join us.
Thank you. Moving right along to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing that I need to add in on the consent agenda. Mr. Hart also shared his 2019-2020 CTE plan, and it was a consensus of the committee to recommend for board approval his agenda and his plan.
For CTE?
For CTE.
Okay. I think that's number seven on there.
That's number seven.
Okay. Then number eight is AIG, and number nine is the Accountability.
Number eight is the AIG, and we have Ms. Gail Smith with us tonight, and I don't know that that's up for consent, I mean up for approval tonight, but did you have some words you would like to add to that, Ms. Smith?
No, except that I understand it was up for approval.
It is. Up for approval, okay.
Yeah, but I don't have any comment.
I knew I had one, good. Alright, thank you.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Chair, point of information, we have on the consent agenda the budget amendment, and the budget amendment doing it on a consent agenda is in violation of our own policy of 8120. We received the budget amendment when we walked in here just now. Also, and just the second thing is only a point of clarification, and if Dr. Smith can answer the question, like you said, he was going to explain it to us, I'd be more than glad to entertain that one to remain on the consent agenda. But Policy 9310 says the names on the plaque is supposed to be there as the date of the construction as approved. But according to the documents that we received today for the consent agenda, it has two separate dates. It says approval by the WB Wicker Elementary School, not when construction was approved. Now, that's okay, we can still do this if someone makes a motion that we override our school board policy. But currently, our school board policy says as the date the construction was approved. When you go to our website on the Lee County Board of Education, it clearly states that the Lee County Board of Education and the Lee County Board of Commissioners have selected the former WB Wicker School site. When it shows the selection on the document that you ask us to put in the consent agenda, you have September 8, 2015 for the Lee County Board of Education, and for the Lee County Commissioners, you actually have May 2, 2016. So that's like eight months different. And I know that's, just to be in a petty thing, I'm just trying to make sure that we're being consistent with our own policies. And it does change the names as far as the location of Mark Akonosha's name, and yours as well.
Well, actually, the policy says that we can put names on there as we choose, and we can add others as we see fit. That was a guiding principle, and that's exactly what we did. And the dates were when we first picked Wicker School as our choice of site, and when construction began.
There's the policy, sir.
Well, it says we can name anybody we want and put on there.
Once you do that, no, sir, once it has this policy, because it takes, it actually takes our chairman at the time, Mark Akonosha, off of that, the listing. Once that is done, after that is done, of course you know you gotta put the construction to when the school is done, but after the basics is done, which is the base of our policy, if we're gonna continue to make policy, we should continue to follow policy. After that is done, then it comes back down, and it says the Board shall also recognize Board of County Commissioners as the date construction was approved. And that's when you can add the additional names, like if it was Margaret Murchison, or, you know, different ones has been very active with the WB Wicker School. As a Board, we can decide to do that. I just want to point out that this is what our policy says. I'm not arguing it, I'm just saying this is what our policy states, and it's the date the construction was approved. It seems a little, it seems a little bit off that there's such an eight-month window that it was approved, but yet it was approved differently by the school, you know, eight, nine months later, and then the County Commissioners. And it does change it if we go by our Board policy. Policy number, by the way, is 9310, if you want to look it up.
I have read the policy, and the policy says we can name members of the Board who are currently serving when construction starts, and any others that we would like to recognize. And that is precisely what we did.
If there's no further discussion on that motion item concerning the budget amendments, is there any discussion about making a motion to move it to new business? Is there a motion to move budget amendments to new business?
I make a motion to move budget amendments to new business.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of moving the budget amendments to new business, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
No. Motion has failed. Alright, there's been a motion for the consent agenda, is there a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor approving the consent agenda as presented, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Those like sign? Those opposed?
No.
Alright. The consent agenda stands approved at this moment. Thank you. Moving along to unfinished business, Board Policy, second reading.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the second reading of the following policies. 4240, 7312, Child Abuse Reports and Investigations, 4700 Student Records, 7100 Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, 7130 Licenseur, and Policy 7940 Classification Personnel Suspension and Dismissal.
Thank you. Since this is coming from committee, needs no second. All in favor approving the Board policies as presented, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Like sign, opposed? Board policies pass the second reading. Move along to our new business. Ms. Womack, again, for Board policies for first reading.
We have none for first reading.
Okay. Moving right along to...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This was out on here. We would like to present Policy 3101 Dual Enrollment.
Alright.
For first reading. For first reading.
All right. Any, any discussion on the, say that number one more time, 74?
31.
3101. Any discussion on 3101? Since it comes from the committee, needs no second. All in favor of approving Board policy on first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign? Board policy, first reading, passes. Moving on to number two, naming Lee County High School main gym. Dr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve naming the Lee County High School main gym the Reginal E. Peace Gym.
All right. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor of naming Lee County High School's main gym? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? That's a good thing. Thank you so much. All right. Moving right along to our Lee County Board of Education 192020 calendar events.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you have in front of you and in your packet are the calendar dates for the, for the Board meetings for the entire year. Try to take into account particular days that the Board might have needed to move, and I think we've hopefully accomplished that.
That includes our March meeting, for men and women. So, any discussion on our calendar events? I will entertain a motion to approve the Lee County Board of Education calendar events.
I make a motion to approve the Lee County calendar events.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of our calendar for 19, 2019, 2020, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, those opposed, like sign? All right. Passes. Moving right along to our Audit Correction Action Plan. Pursuant to General Statute 115C-447, each local school administrative unit shall have its accounts and all of its counts of individual schools audited. Upon the completion of the 17 audit, procedure findings were noted. In accordance with the statute, the Board of the Local School Administrative Unit shall submit the audit and the corrective actions related to its internal control procedures. You have before you the corrective actions recommended by our auditor, and upon approval, these will be forwarded to Local Government Commission and the State Board of Education as described by the statute GS 115447. The audit identified spending by our EC department for the 1718 year that did not comply with the budget as approved by the Board of Education. Please note that personal changes have already been made in the EC department to reassure that the Board that all spending complies with the budget as approved by the Board of Education. We are aware that this was a primary limited to the EC department, but also departments will and must receive additional training for correct budgetary processes. A previous corrective action was passed unanimously by this Board, meeting in a regular session on March 12, 2019. The following motion was made by Board Member Womack and seconded by Board Member Sutton. The motion stated the Finance Director is to develop a monthly finance report to be presented to the Finance Committee and to the Board. It is also recommended that Policy 6420, 8720 be amended to state any contract involving expenditures in excess of $50,000 must be approved by the Board Attorney and approved by the Board in advance. At this time, I will look for a motion to approve...
Mr. Chair, would you mind repeating the motion that was made?
The one from March 12?
Yes.
The Finance Director is to develop a monthly finance report to be presented to the Finance Committee and to the Board, which you have in front of you at this time. Is there a motion to approve the Corrective Action Plan as presented?
Mr. Chair, I'd like for us to have discussion before.
Once I have a motion and a second, we're open the floor for discussion.
Okay, then I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
At this time, we have a motion and a second, and the floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I have a point of personal privilege. We had a budget, we had an audit before, and we had deficits in that audit, and we had deficiencies in that audit. And each time, it came back saying the Board of Education will implement controls and procedures. We have pretty much cookie-cutted the same thing to put here in our corrective action. Upon my research, when you go through the corrective action, we have until the 30th of June, now that we've extended the audit for the third or fourth time. And during that time, I would like to suggest that we actually come up with a detailed corrective action, which would include some of the key components when you try to present a corrective action plan in a process. And that includes targeting the areas of deficiencies. It includes where we have benchmarks that we are trying to improve some of those things as well. And that's, that's my big concern, is that I'd like to know, does any other Board member have any concerns that we had an audit, we were told to do something, we did not do it, and that will be, you know, a second finding, and now we have additional things without being in detail. For instance, there should be a timeline. It should not say finding 1801, and then you name who the person is, and the answer is immediately. It should have a distinct timeframe and benchmarkers to make these corrections, particularly if they're not only in violation of our Board policy, but if there are also any violations that would violate the North Carolina State Statues or the School Budget and Physical Control Act. I think that would be safe for the Board that we have physical control measures, and we actually discuss what we're going to do, as opposed to no lack of accountability that's on this page. I don't know if the audience has a copy of what we've presented here today, but when you put it out there, there's nothing, nothing has changed from the last time we did our audit, as far as the corrective action plan.
So, one thing, two things I've recommended. We've already passed one corrective action of the monthly finance report, and then I'm also, would like to, if this passes, recommend that we change Policy 6420 and 8720 when, in regards to the amount of any contract. I think this is the corrective action plan that the auditor felt like would help us in our, because the biggest thing that the audit showed us that these were processes findings, not that no one misappropriated funds, no one took any money and went to the bank, that this is areas of improvement where we can improve how we do our record keeping. One of the things that I actually included in here is that we must receive training to not only all our directors, but also our Finance Department, because it's nothing, nothing that we can not look at even further after today. We can always find ways to better improve. We can always find ways to keep up the integrity of this school system. And one thing, by changing this policy and asking for the monthly report, I think we're doing so. And again, just because we approved this today doesn't mean we can't continue to improve in the future and make our processes more efficient.
Yes, and I do not disagree with you, Mr. Chair, but I would just like to, just a point of clarity to explain that when you go through a corrective action plan, there's key components that we should have. It should state the problem or weakness, including the root cause, list of the individuals who's accountable, and results for the corrective action. Create a simple measurable solution that addresses the root cause, which is not a part of this plan. Each solution should have a person that's accountable for it, which we still have the same person. We need to set achievable deadlines, and that is not on there. That just says immediately. And to monitor the progress of our plan. And we do not have that, and my concern is that we already have the auditor extend it until the 30th, and now we rushing through without having a detailed plan. And that concerns me as far as the Board being physically, physically responsible for the actions within some key issues within the audit, in the audit process.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to quote something from Anderson Smith Wyke's report. This is our audit, and it says, "We became aware of matters that an opportunity for strengthening internal controls and operating efficiency are available." And then he goes on to say, "These actions should include ensuring that any management or employees with purchasing authority have a thorough understanding of the proper procedures for initiating a purchase in accordance with state law as described in the School Budget Physical Control Act." That, that person is no longer an employee of Lee County School Systems. So that's not immediate. That, that's in the past. That correction has already been made. In addition, the Board should evaluate its own budget oversight procedures and determine what changes are necessary to help ensure the district properly complies with all state and local budget requirements. And as you just surmised, the Finance Committee is now in a position to do just that, as promotion made by Mrs. Womack. So we are indeed complying with the objectives of the audit, and I think they're very specific, and, and as you suggested, they will continue.
I was just going to say, we met with the auditor last week, and we had a chance to ask questions. So one of the things I did ask was, you know, with you saying that he did recommend this corrective action plan, to me, looking at this, reading this, and having familiarity with making school improvement plans, and this is a type of improvement plan, implement controls and procedures is very vague, and he said that we could go in and put specifics in here that if the Board chooses to do so. And I would feel more comfortable if we would take the time to do that, simply because we did have a repeat finding. So if this is indeed the same plan we used...
This, this is not the same plan we used in the past.
I'm asking that because like I, you know, I just got on the Board in December. It looks similar, and it is leaving a lot open to interpretation. Implement controls and procedures is vague to me. I just feel like, since we had more findings, since we had a corrective plan of some type, and this time we had more findings rather than less, it would make sense to do something that would give more controls.
Any other discussion? There's been a motion and a second to approve this corrective action plan as presented with the added change of the policy. Is there any, is, excuse me, with the added change of the policy of 6420, 8720, all in favor of the corrective action plan as presented with the amended change in the policy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign?
No, absolutely not.
No.
All right. The corrective action plan is, action plan is approved with the amended policy of 6420 and 8720. At this time, I would like to call for a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under NCGS Section 143, 31811A1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of closed session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand in closed session. Is there a motion to return to open session?
I make a motion to return to open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand in closed session. Are there any motions to come before this Board concerning personnel?
I make a motion to move to approve, the Lee County School Board approve the following two-year contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the personnel report for the two-year contract for Assistant Superintendent, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other further personnel motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the one-year teacher contracts.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve one-year teacher contracts? All, all the, all this, all those agrees, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign, opposed? Is there any other personnel motions or contracts to come before this Board?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the two-year teacher contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the two-year teacher contracts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Any more personnel contracts coming before this Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the personnel report as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign? Is there any other motions to come before this Board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We adjourned.